Well, that's after everyone. That's what it's about. It was grabbing the fault of Mark. Yeah.
Okay, y'all ready? Okay, we'll just go ahead and call the work session to order. Just go down to the row on our agenda here. I was going to let, if that's okay, Mr. Robert Shackelford speak to the board tonight, this afternoon, and mayor about growth. Is that what you're gonna talk about, the Henco, I mean, the hotel?
Mayor, well, we're not appreciating the opportunity to come and talk with you today about a proposed project that we have to make some decisions about. A group known as Hunt Properties has contacted McHenry County about placing a flag hotel and a chain sit-down restaurant here in the county. Their thought is to use the old hospital property, which of course is owned by the county. And if they do that, they will build a flag hotel and in all likelihood, a chain sit-down restaurant, something along the lines of a Cracker Barrel or Chili's, something of that nature. And in order to help fund this project, they would like for us to create a TIF district. And this information that I've handed you tonight gives you some background information about the TIF program. The TIF stands for Tax Incentive Financing. And just to give you a broad overview of how the program works, there are base taxes on a piece of property. Now, with that property being owned by the county, there are no taxes currently being calculated or paid on that property since it's owned by a municipality. But Brandon Moore would calculate what the base taxes would be on that particular piece of property were it owned by a private individual. And that would include both city and county taxes. So the city would begin to receive taxes on that piece of property if this deal goes forward that you're not presently receiving right now. The county would also receive the base taxes on that piece of property, just like they would have found it and was being taxed on the property or any one of you. There are also some other dedicated taxes that would be calculated primarily for debt service, so both the city and the county would have an allocation for debt service. So just as an example, if eight percent of your total taxable amount went to debt service, then you would have that same percentage that would go towards your debt service at the city level and also at the county level. And there would also be an allocation for the schools at the county level. So whatever the schools' current allocation is or their breakdown, which right now, I believe, is around forty-five percent of every taxable amount that comes out of that one hundred dollar increment goes toward schools, that would also be set aside. So the school allocation will be made out of this. And once the property is developed and has improvements on it, a flag hotel, which in all likelihood will be either a Hampton Inn or some type of a Marriott property. Hilton and Marriott are the two flags that he generally uses, and he's looking at a Hampton Inn here. It'd be probably a seventy-three-room hotel. It would have all the amenities of a traditional hotel of that nature, meeting space, probably up to eight hundred square feet. You'd have an exercise room, you'd have an outdoor pool, just all the typical amenities you can see associated with a Hampton Inn facility. When those improvements are made to that property, obviously that changes the taxable value of that property. So that goes up substantially. So after the city and the county receive their base taxes and those other allocations that we've talked about, you've got an amount there that is what is called the available increment. And that available increment can be used over a period of time to help service the debt on the construction of that project. So he pays the taxes at whatever the going tax rate is. Hunt Properties, the company, if you will, they pay the taxes on whatever the taxable amount is that's determined by the local assessor. And then that available increment, after all those other deductions are made, the city gets their money, the county gets their money, the debt service in both gets their money, and the schools get their money, whatever's left then is that available increment. And that can be refunded, if you will, or rebated back to Hunt Properties to help them service the debt. Now, there's a cap on that. It can be either a time limit cap or it can be a dollar amount cap. What we're proposing is a recommendation of both, a combination of both. The maximum term for a TIF agreement is twenty years in the state of Tennessee. So you could have a maximum time limit of twenty years or a ceiling or a dollar cap of some to be determined amount. So let's just say that when it hit, in this example, a million dollars, when we had rebated a million dollars back to him, if we did that within ten years, then that would terminate the TIF agreement. So whichever you reach first, either the dollar cap or the time limit. Now, if Mr. Hunt should sell that property sometime in the midst of that, maybe he's into it three years and somebody comes in and makes him an offer on the property, he controls the TIF, even if he sells the property. So he can choose to retain the TIF agreement and it will continue until it expires on one of those two conditions, either time or a dollar cap. Or if he chose to, he could transfer the TIF agreement to the new buyer. So it's an incentive to them. But it would still continue under the same terms that we would originally set up with Mr. Hunt. So all of this is subject to negotiation between us and Mr. Hunt as we come up with what is known as Economic Impact Plan. And this handout that I've given you, I'm not gonna go through it and read it all and bore you with a lot of details, but you can read through it and understand it just as well as I can. I think it's pretty comprehensive and gives you all the information that you need about the TIF program. Really, the purpose of this gathering today and my being here to talk with you about this, and I'd like to mention Kirby Lathan, too, who's on the Industrial Development Board, he's here, and I appreciate Kirby taking the time to just give you and kind of be a part of this. We're talking to the city and county. I'm meeting with the county commission tonight in their seven o'clock meeting just to get a feel for whether or not you are even receptive to this idea. Because if either one of those municipalities is not receptive to the idea, then the whole deal is dead in the water. The IDB has to approve the plan first. We'll be responsible for drafting the plan, and that will be a negotiation process between us and Hunt Properties. And then, once we have gotten the draft plan, we have a public hearing. And that's all laid out in this information that I've given you here. There's a public hearing that takes place, so the public has an opportunity to learn about the project and respond to it positively or negatively. After that, then we move forward with the approval by the industrial development board of the project and the plan, and then the city and the county would have to approve the project and the plan in its final form by resolution. So that's kind of how that process works. The property would be transferred from the county to the industrial development board, and we would transfer the property to Mr. Hunt for some agreed-upon promise. So all of that's yet to be determined. All I can use is very broad strokes right now because we're very much in preliminary stages of this. We do have an attorney that we've hired to represent us who is very familiar with the TIF program. Tom Trent is his name, and he's well-versed in this type of program, and he would be assisting us every step of the way, and he represents our interest in this matter. Mr. Hunt is a businessman, he's a very good businessman, a very shrewd and aggressive businessman. So he's gonna ask for everything that he can ask for, and it's our responsibility to rein him in and come up with a deal that is agreeable to all parties and satisfactory to all parties. What questions do you have about what we've discussed?
So the available increment, is that the difference between the base property assessment and then the property assessment?
Yes, after the improvements are made.
With improvements made?
Yes, when you take out the base taxes, whatever they would be, you take out the debt service allocation for both the city and the county, and you take out the schools' portion from the county side. So all that is still being paid to the city and the county to take care of those major areas. There's also an administration fee of up to five percent that can be withheld out of that allocation. So again, that's probably a negotiated amount. It might be two percent, three percent, maybe five. There is an administrative fee that can be withheld.
Is the administrative fee to the city, the county, and the IDB, or is that five percent?
It would flow to the IDB as five percent in total.
Gotcha.
Yes, so if the IDB received before five percent, and we're gonna split that three ways between the city and the county and the IDB, certainly that can be negotiated. Certainly can be negotiated. It's a maximum, no, it's a maximum of five percent to be used on whatever amount of the three municipalities we're to use that for.
Say, for instance, if it's blessed and approved, what are we looking at roughly timeframe to start?
Well, in the proposal that we initially talked about, he would have had to have started by the end of twenty-four, and the project would be completed by the end of twenty-five. Now, we've yet to talk to Mr. Hunt about that. Those are just our preliminary numbers, but it would be subject to his input on start dates and finish dates. But there are clawback provisions where if he does not start on time, then you can claw back the property ownership or funding, tax incentive. If he doesn't meet his end of the bargain, then the clawback provisions in the deal that allows to take possession of the property.
Restaurant and motel, or just one or the other?
Well, we're asking for both. Now, all he has proposed, what he has put on the table is the flag restaurant, well, excuse me, the flag hotel, the Hampton Inn. We're going to ask him for the flag hotel as well as a sit-down chain restaurant. He talked about that as being something in the future, and we want to tie it into the original TIF arrangement to have the restaurant and the hotel. But again, that's subject to negotiation. We've all got to reach terms that are agreeable.
What kind of timeframe do you think, does your attorney think that it's gonna take with the negotiations to take?
Well, he hasn't really given me a firm answer on that. I have asked him that question, and you give the old if you think it's. That's all I can tell you is if you think it's. But we would move as quickly as we could if we get your preliminary approval that you have an interest in the project, and assuming that all the details work out to your satisfaction, that you feel like this is something you could support, and if the county commission says the same thing tonight, then we're gonna move forward with the draft Economic Impact Plan. And once we get that done, that's a negotiation between us and Hunt Properties. Once we get that done, then we schedule a public hearing. And that's to be advertised in the newspapers, gotta run for a minimum of two weeks in our local paper, and then we set the meeting. And again, the details of that are here in this document that I've given to you today. So we think it's very realistic to start by the end of twenty-twenty-four, hopefully sooner than that. He's doing a project right now, just like this, in Henderson, Tennessee, in Chester County. He's done them in Lexington, he's done them in Jackson, he's done them all over West Tennessee. So this is not his first.
Is that the one right out by the red light?
Yes, down in forty-five. Got a sign up right there on the right.
Been there about two years.
Yeah. Well, he has bought that property. That property was owned by four private individuals, and Kirby did some research on that and got some information for us on that for our board, but that property was owned by four individuals that was owned privately, and he has purchased that property. So he is the proud owner of that. I think it's six point six acres, is that's how he, I think, he bought it. He's very good at what he does, from all indication.
So, Mr. Robert, you're looking at us to do a preliminary vote, motion tomorrow night, hopefully, to bring to table, or is it something that we need to?
And again, this is, this is just expressing your interest in the project. If you're saying we're interested in seeing this happen, and that's all we need is a green light to start moving forward, assuming the county is also interested, it's not a firm commitment, saying we're on more than a hundred percent. We know there are things that could change in the negotiation process that make it unpalatable for all of us. We may all run away from it before it's done. I don't know how that's gonna pan out. I don't think it will, because again, he's done this in other communities nearby, and been very successful with it. I'm sure he can do the same thing.
So you gotta have county and city. If you don't get both, you can't do it.
That's right. Our IDB board has already voted to pursue the project, but now we're looking for a preliminary confirmation of your interest and also of the county commission.
I don't see why we wouldn't.
I don't see why we wouldn't. Well, and one thing I didn't mention, and maybe this is something that you might assume from the conversation that we have, but when this TIF ends, whether it ends because of the term limit of time or because of the dollar cap limit, when the TIF program ends, all of that available increment that we've been using to help him service debt that's been rebated back to them, it now goes to the city and the county. So you're gonna have those future tax revenues that are much elevated and accelerated rate because of the improvements to that property. At Hampton Inn, you're probably looking at a construction cost of probably in the neighborhood of seven million dollars. So you can imagine what that's gonna do to the value of that property when he builds that Hampton Inn. The restaurant, probably a million plus, maybe as much as a million and a half or more. So those elevated taxes are gonna be available in the future. Once that TIF program ends to the city and the county, you'll be getting a hundred percent of your portion of it. It gives you some future security in your planning, your budgeting process.
Can you use that much?
Any other questions? Thank you for your time. I appreciate your patience and your attention to it.
Thank you.
Any more questions on that? I forgot on the agenda, maybe that's what it is. Next up is Mr. Alton, head coach. He's going to explain to the board what's been going on on Henco Drive and his engineering.
I'll apologize in advance for not being as eloquent as Mr. Shackelford is. It's good to see you, everybody. Thank y'all for letting me be here tonight. One opinion you is, is a breakdown of what we project costs. I don't know how many of y'all are familiar with Henco Drive. I'm sure all of you are, but probably also you're familiar with the fact that a few years ago, Henco Drive came down, Synco developed, funded the drive because of stormwater-related issues. The city had to repair that. There's now a significant Synco just off of Henco Drive near the parking lot at Phillips, where Phillips Petroleum is, again, because of stormwater failures. About in two thousand nineteen, when the flood happened here, it created several issues and problems for McHenry County. All of that area used to drain over towards the railroad tracks and then down to Cypress Creek. All of y'all know where I'm talking about. And in the flood, what happened is we had a significant amount of just soil, silt, and sand and other stuff that deposited in that area, and it affected the drainage. We've been working with the West Tennessee River Basin Authority, who works for free, will cost us anything, to help mitigate that. They're gonna go in and they'll do repairs, they'll dredge that back out and reestablish the channel, so that area will drain again. But after the flood occurred, some of the existing storm sewers on, it's the city storm sewer, but it's on Phillips' side, collapsed. I don't know how many of you have been down there, but this railroad track that runs on the backside of Phillips Petroleum, and they get deliveries by rail and undermine the rail. Phillips wound up spending what we were told was one point two million dollars repairing that so they could remain in service. We've been told fairly explicitly, explicitly, that can't happen again. They've got other places they can go that are safe sites, and we don't wanna lose nearly a hundred and thirty-two, I think, employees that are out there. So when, when the mayor called, made me aware of all this, and county mayor Larry Smith also, we came down and looked, looked at the site. We also met extensively and walked the site with the West Tennessee River Basin folks to determine what they could do and then what would be left. Just so that you'll know the level of concern, a portion of this existing stormwater goes underneath one of the operational buildings for Phillips Petroleum. If that caves in, then you're talking about potential loss of life. So it's a public health and safety-related issue. I don't know, y'all are certainly by now familiar with the American Rescue Plan Act. We're using that, that grant program to help fix the problems in Selmer sewer system. That's called, that's part of what's called the non-competitive grant. Every city, every county got allocations. We're able to work with Chris and Angie and I, we're able to work with the county to be able to get additional funds that were unspent, that the county didn't have obligated. The county gave the city money. We also got money from Rayburn, we got money from Eastview, and we got what money was left over from Bethel Springs allocation. So all of those, all of those parts of the county allocation also came to the city. As a result, we're able to get, what is it, six, well over six million dollars in grant funds for that. This phase is called the competitive phase, and they're funding three different types of projects. The one that we want to pursue is called resource protection, and that has to do specifically with stormwater. The program manager is a friend of mine, I talked to her again today to verify that what we're talking about would be an eligible project. So what you've got in front of you is what we've identified as the cost to go in and replace all of the failing stormwater system that's currently on that Phillips side and to repair that big Synco that's out there in front of their operations building or their office part of the building and near their parking lot. We're gonna, what we wanna do is apply for two million dollars. There is a local match requirement. The local match is based on what the state of Tennessee calls your ability to pay index. Depending on your perspective, from my perspective, this is good. Selmer has one of the lowest ability to pay indexes in the state. Where Brentwood, Franklin, Murfreesboro, they would be a hundred, Selmer is a ten. Well, that, that means our demographics aren't very good, but that also means that we'd only have to pay, where they'd have to pay a thirty-five percent local match, we only have to pay a five percent local match. So what, what we're looking at is basically a hundred thousand dollars. What we tried to do, and I'm glad Mr. Shackelford is here, what we tried to do is put together a consortium that would help with this. You've got a resolution in front of you tonight, well, well, I guess it'll be tomorrow night. Where somebody has to be the lead applicant, somebody has to pledge the match, the local match. But what we've tried to work out is not just Selmer pay this. Phillips has said that they're willing to participate. The IDB, I believe, is.
Favorable.
Favorable, not committed. But favorable, I wanna differentiate, to participating. Obviously, Selmer, and I've talked to Larry Smith, and the county also is willing to participate. So hopefully, hope is not a plan. The plan is that each of those four entities would split that amount, which should be around a hundred thousand dollars. The other part of this that's important to note is that you wouldn't spend that, the city's twenty-five thousand dollar in, in one fiscal year. This will break over at least two, if not three, fiscal years, so that your obligation at most would be twelve and a half, twelve and a half thousand a year. So this is important. One of the other things that Todd Carr, the pipe manager for this site, has told us is if this gets done, that Phillips is now looking at moving another piece of their operation to Selmer. They love the fact that we've got rail service here and you got immediate access to a four-lane highway that can get you to the interstate relatively quickly. Again, there's no pledge or promise that they'll do that, but that, and it's not a big number of jobs, I think, what he's shared with us, maybe thirty new jobs, but it's thirty new jobs. I don't know what the capital investment would be in need to be, but again, it's important. It really is the city's obligation because it's part of the city's stormwater system, and it is, it is collapsing, it is failing, not through any act of neglect by the city, but primarily due to what happened in the two thousand nineteen flood. So we've got a methodology for remitting that, and we're trying to do it in a way where it doesn't cost any entity a lot of money to be able to get access to two million dollars. And I'm glad to answer any questions.
So the part that goes under their building, I mean, would they be displaced?
They wouldn't. What we're gonna do is we're gonna build a new line to take that out from under their building. The new line would not go under their building, and we will fill the existing line with what's called flowable field, wet concrete, so that it won't collapse.
How long do you think the project could take?
Well, it's government-funded, so.
It has to be done by September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six.
I will tell you, it's, Tennessee has been very slow, where other states around us have dispensed with their money, obligated their money, construction's ongoing. The state of Tennessee has been a little late. This round of funding, I think they've learned a lot of lessons. They, they think they will cycle through this fairly quickly, make the award, the applications are due in the middle of August. They wanna make the notifications aboard the latter part of October, first part of November. There's a review and clearance process, I don't know how else to say it. Review and clearance process that you have to go through after that point that could take a while. That's been another real source of aggravation for everybody's participated in the non-competitive part of the grant. But we think that hopefully by the first of the year, if not certainly early spring, that we'd have access to money and be in position to be in the work immediately. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Hey, Alton, you mentioned at the beginning, there's already six million dollars in funding. Where is that money?
That money is in the non-competitive grant, and that's being used. Y'all probably know that Selmer is under a state consent order, consent decree, administrative order from the state of Tennessee because of issues in their sanitary sewer system. We, we're mandated to make those necessary repairs and improvements and upgrades. We've gotten a community to develop a block grant that we're about to take bids on, we will open bids on in August, that will take care of part of that, but the balance of that, the balance of the work is significant. I don't know if you paid attention or not or seen it or knew what it was, but we've had three lines collapse in the last quarter and a half years. Large lines, one of them was right out here near the courthouse, one of them's out Peach Street, not far from where S U D's office is. And those are, years ago, when this system was built, the best technology available and maybe the least expensive technology was, the material was to use concrete pipe. Everybody thought, well, it's concrete, it can't ever fail. But what they didn't realize was that in sanitary sewer, that issues methane and hydrogen sulfide gas, which eats concrete away. So that gas rises and eats the top of the pipe away, and some of those pipes are eighteen feet deep, and that overburden with stress over time will just collapse the pipe and fill the pipe up. So we've had to pay kind of a lot of money to, to make those repaired. We wanna do away with all that. We wanna, we wanna do a large project that will fix all of that, and we saw this as an opportunity to maximize the amount of grant money that we would get and minimize the amount that the city would have to match, 'cause it's also a five percent match, and get out from under the compliance or get back into compliance with all of our district permitting. We've already, we've already taken the step to get the plant fixed, and that's in compliance right now. We finished that this past summer, it's, it's operating well, it's doing everything it's supposed to do. Now, we've gotta go fix the collection system. That's what, that's what we're about in business to do.
Thank you for your time.
Sure, absolutely. Glad to hear it.
I have a question. On that, on that Henco Drive, we're.
I have a question. On that Henco Drive, when we were talking about that goes up on the hill, doesn't it come down and we're just right in front of Henco?
It's from where Henco Drive is, through the sinkhole.
Yeah.
Around the office building, back through the operations building, all the way to the backside of the property where it's supposed to discharge into that drainage way.
Right, right.
And I don't know the value of the work that West Tennessee River Basin is doing. It's a lot.
They do a lot out there.
Yeah, they, again, because we're a member of the West Tennessee River Basin, they do it for no charge. They've got all the equipment, personnel, technology to do it. They're well-funded, so we brought them in, they agreed to do it and we're grateful to them, so save money that way too.
Let's see if we can get the grant.
Yeah, I mean, five for 10.
So you've got the resolution part tomorrow night, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, again, the resolution has to be, somebody's got to be responsible. Selmer will be the lead applicant because it's Selmer's system, even though we're getting participation, hopefully, from other entities in county and from Phillips themselves. It reads that Selmer will be responsible for the match.
It'd be a good thing if we could get those other jobs in the future.
It sure would. It sure would. Oh, and maybe more importantly, to salvage the ones that are out there right now.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thanks everybody for hearing.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to Alton and IDB Board, Mr. Robert, he went out there as well and walked the whole entire Phillips 66 around the hole, so making sure that we do get that fixed. I appreciate everybody working on that. Now I guess we'll just talk about the old business, which was the Selmer Elementary Storm Shelter is still undecided. I know you don't have anything new on that. And then also the next would be, we tabled the planning committee consultant. Is there any talk on that or is that something that you feel like you're comfortable now to go through tomorrow on the, making a decision on?
I'm just sitting there Southwest.
We have a meeting coming up. I believe it's, where's Brenda? What day is the meeting? July 18th, planning committee meeting?
Yeah.
July the 18th, I think I got it on there. And it's, you know, where they'll come down and they'll start, because we did have Chris Pate last meeting and Brandon can tell you, we're going to need somebody to, you know, help us make the right decisions for whatever comes in play. Like, you know, we've got some investors coming to that meeting, just going to propose, you know, wanting to purchase land, they're ready to put something out. So are y'all going to be ready to go in that direction?
I agree with them.
Southwest will be kind of.
Okay, and then in your packets, I know y'all saw that I put in the cameras for the Selmer City Park location, I think. Did y'all get those? Did y'all have any questions on those?
Who's on my legs there?
There's all the cameras there.
We're going to put cameras around the restroom. We've had it vandalized so much, you've been able to see who goes in or out? Because the way AFC looked at it, there wasn't that coverage that we would need.
I didn't know anything about this.
How many cameras are out there now?
There's four cameras out there now.
Are they mostly ones that were already framed for?
I don't know. He went out there and he looked at everything and he was saying that AFC.
I don't even know if it was even.
AFC, that's who does our cameras.
AFC does the cameras there.
Those that does all of our cameras.
And they, yeah, and they went out there and looked at it and that's why I gave you the footage, that you could see, that's what, you could see better.
So the four cameras we got ain't doing no good.
This is what they come up to you and he was saying.
What I was looking for in the restroom bill.
Definitely.
They do not cover the front of the restroom. But you don't have a problem getting a camera up there.
Well, that's not what.
Well, let me just post, because I haven't even been.
Well, AFC just looked at it because I said with a vandal.
What's the quote?
On the, the three.
Six thousand dollars for all of them.
But yes, he.
What's the monthly cost?
He said, well, I don't know if they broke it down in monthly costs, but I'm sure just add to what y'all got. You've got community center and you've got here and, you know, you'll have, just added to the, you don't have to make a decision today. You can table that and get more information that you need, but.
We're asking for more, I just said we're, you're going to add all three together, so it's.
Yeah.
Six thousand.
Yeah, about six thousand dollars.
But having the bathroom that was vandalized twice this year could have paid for that, could have paid for this camera system almost, so.
So if somebody comes out with a ski mask or something and you can't even verify who it is, how?
Well, that's true. You won't be able to verify that, but at least you could kind of look at.
I'm not opposed to it.
Well, no, it's totally y'all's decision. I just wanted y'all to know.
Oh.
Has this been budgeted in my budget?
Has there been another, I mean, has there been another quote of this six thousand dollar?
I mean, we can get another quote from another camera supplier, but you.
It's over five thousand dollars though.
Well, most likely in this situation, because you already have a contract with AFC.
Where does that add to it?
It's just proprietary.
Get us the cost, whatever adding these cameras to a month, what does it go up to?
But that is a good question.
I'm just trying to.
It's a proprietary with AFC.
I haven't known about that.
I was just counting up the, what we had lost with the vandalized bathrooms and such and I just decided to talk to him when he came in and we just sat down and talked about it and thought, well, just give me a quote, so.
I mean, I just feel like being the parks and rent director would have been honest to have known about it before it appeared today.
What is about?
Well, you know, as the administrator of all the money and the way I look at trying to save money, it was looking.
How much was the cost on the bathroom vandalization?
Well, it's about $2,000, almost $3, because she had one ticket one time and then she had another come out. So I was just saying, well, for that.
How's this one?
We had a sink that was vandalized and then we had to go back out there and there was another incident that happened. But it doesn't, you know, we're just saying if we could, I just got a quote, that's all we do.
Yeah, I'm like John, just find out how much it would add to our monthly.
Okay, I'll ask that. Y'all have anything else you want to talk about? We've got a resolution, we've heard from IDB Board, taxes centered. Anything else? Anything from the audience, hopefully, Johnny?
I do, and it's about a matter that was discussed at the last city planning meeting and I'm sorry, I did not attend the city meeting. I had another meeting that night, so I couldn't come. But going around to my businesses on First Friday that participates in that event, I've had a couple of business owners in the downtown area that are actually concerned about the alleyway parking. I'm not sure who all have been in to speak to them about that, but they are concerned that there may be something done where they can no longer park in the alley. And so I was asked to speak tonight about that.
We're working on, we're working on that now. Chief Carr can speak on that if you like. We know exactly where that's coming from. So we've looked at the parking, it's between.
Well, we haven't, we haven't talked to anyone that I know of about parking in the alley.
Well, there was, I believe there was at least two or three that said that someone had come in and spoke to them about a possible ordinance being done on the alleyway parking.
I think you'd have to be more specific on who came and talked to you with it.
Well, they did talk to me. They talked to a business owner.
I'm sure it's that Dr. Barks.
Absolutely. And whoever has it and Jesus cares.
And I last meeting, he come up about people coming out on the main road, he wanted them to go out the other way, which makes sense. And he come up about putting the signs one way.
Yeah, one way sign.
That's where it comes.
There's a one way sign up and still five parked down there.
Well, and.
And we, and we talked about the alleys and they wanted us going for it and we talked about that.
Because there ain't, because they ain't wide enough to park on and go there, right?
And we talked about why Chief Carr was giving us definition of being able to get in there and put out a farm, save a life or whatever, when the mirrors can't go down through there. It was a reason for it. It wasn't just telling them to come out the alley.
Right, and it was also K and G, because they park in there, the Miss Lois from B and R U Supply parks in that alley too. But taking consideration, if this is something that you guys are thinking about, there is no hydrants in the alley. Whenever you're talking about the alleys, you have adopted sidewalks that go beside the buildings because our buildings are zero outlines in most cases throughout downtown. And then also, before we had the handicap accessibility that was there, we have steps that are going into side doors and alleys also, besides businesses that are also located in the alleys. So it is an issue. I know that, but I know that they're expressing concerns to me. And whenever you're talking about taking away their parking, one of the main expressions from the ones that had said something was that they're concerned that right now they already see parking as an issue in downtown because whenever you're going to shop, then if you lap the building two or three times or the block and you still can't find a parking spot, then you're just not going to go to that building that night. So they're afraid that if the parking's took away, they have to take in parking in another spot and that's going to take away a customer's parking spot. And when there's not any designated parking areas in the downtown area to where business owners could park somewhere else in a further street, they don't mind walking in or something like that, but there's not anything like that here.
We also discussed them by the railroad tracks.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Jay Reynolds property by railroad track or by depot?
By, you know, just trying to find a place to make a parking lot, because there needs to be more parking downtown. There's not enough, if you just go around outside all the buildings, there's not enough for anybody anyway.
And one of the businesses actually even suggested that even on Main Street, that maybe the grass and trees can be took away and then we could go back to the original parking lot, what they do down in Corinth, where you're going in at an angle. That was also an idea too, that one of the businesses has suggested. They said, I have enough alleyway parking on Main Street.
Well, have you had any problems with that? Because you went down and talked to.
Well, I went down there and they wanted to put signs up in the alleys for private parking for a business. And I said, well, the city owns the alley and you can't put private signs up.
Right.
And then past that, we haven't done anything, I think.
Right, no.
I think we're still at that same location, because I think we had a call Friday night about somebody parking on that private parking lot and they wanted us to come and make people move off of the private lot and we told them they couldn't make people move off of the private lot. It's your lot. If you want them towed, you'll have to tow them yourself.
Right.
We're not towing them. And so we're sort of just in a status quo on that, because, you know, we're, I understand both sides of that.
I do too.
And I think they're sort of trying to put us in the middle of it, but that's what they are doing. They're putting us in the middle of it when they should be able to work it out themselves.
Right.
Because there's plenty of room to get on that private parking lot and then go out on the private parking lot. Like granted, there's not room in the alley for two cars to meet, but there is room to make it one way and work it out. That's just my opinion. It's just hard-headed people that don't want to work with each other.
And like, you know, they said, we are working on a parking area, trying to find a new one. You know, we've got some, that we've reached out to and they're hopefully going to help us with that, so. But that.
But it's.
Because if we do one, it wasn't in either the car.
Right, except for a car.
Yeah, we've been working on that, so.
But I don't think we're wanting to put signs up and we're surely not wanting to try to enforce that, because it puts us in that.
I'm calling in all the alleys, everybody's going to park in there.
Or that's the police's position. I'm not sure what the board's position is, but I don't think.
My opinion, right now, until we get it worked out, they just go ahead and do like they do. We ain't got nowhere else to put them.
And we're going to try to, if something happens, we'll go down there and we try to.
Let them do what they're doing.
Talk to the people, both sides of it, the best we can.
And as far as most of the businesses, I mean, you can drive through downtown at any time to see that they're pulling in from the main way. I think there's one alley business that may not, they may be coming in from the backside there at the post office. But pretty much everybody that are parking in the alley are pretty much doing what they're supposed to because they know you enter from the main street and then you have one side that you park on where your driver door is opening to the alleyway. They know this, so.
But I understand, somebody out of town that comes through there, lost it last year, as he's did.
Right.
They don't know what to do. They just pull up in there.
And I see Dr. Barks' part too, with his clinic being there and his people, or not all, local people that come to visit him and they're not sure on what to do, so.
And he has got signs up in or exit on this parking lot.
And there's a one way sign down there too, yeah. And I had told them that also. Oh, that's it. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else? All right, question to John? Do you miss anything, Case?